Good afternoon. I'd like to welcome everyone to the regular meeting of the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners for April the 18th, 2024. We will begin our meeting with a moment of silence, followed by the pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Plyler. And if you would, if you're able, would you please stand for the moment of silence and remain standing for the pledge? Thank you.
Please, the fact please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Citizens who are interested in participating in the public session portion of the meeting, you may do so by phone and by calling 336-422-1200. And if you do call in, you'll be placed on hold until the public session begins. And members of the audience who are interested in participating in the public session, this is not the public hearing, we have a short public hearing, I think, but not the public hearing, it is the public session afterwards. If you're interested in speaking, you need to have completed a speaker card and returned to our clerk, and you could actually do that now, if you wanted to. The first item on the agenda is a public hearing on the zoning petition of Tribam Investments LLC from RS40 to LIL, which is F-1639. And Mr. Chris Murphy, our Planning and Development Service Director, will give us a brief overview of the request.
As the chairman did state, this is a petition of Tribam Investments LLC for, to rezone a 0.42 acre piece of property located on the north side of US 421, west of Dalton Road. It's a request for special use limited rezoning or special use district no site plan zoning from RS40 to LIL or limited industrial limited use. This is the subject property shown on the Legacy Growth Management Area map. It is located within GMA 5. You do see where it is shown in the rural GMA area there between the western extent of Lewisville and the river along US 421. This is the location map showing the subject property, again, in yellow, on the north side of US 421, west of Dalton Road. Subject property shown on the aerial imagery, again, outlined in yellow, it is mostly wooded, and again, it does sit on the north side of US 421, west of Dalton. And this is looking north from US 421 into the subject property, you see the zoning sign. This is looking west along US 421 towards the river, the subject property is to the right. This is looking north across US 421 at the subject property from the south side of US 421, you see the sign there in the background. As far as analysis, this is a request for a sign off premise, more commonly known as a billboard, and that's the only use that's being requested in this limited industrial limited use request. The site is currently inaccessible from any of the surrounding roads. Access is dependent upon approval of an elected body's special use permit, which is a separate action item which you will consider after this rezoning, if this rezoning recommendation or if this rezoning is approved. In looking at this, because it was a request for a small piece of limited industrial limited use, we did check with the county attorney's office, and it was determined if this were to be challenged, it more than likely would not be considered spot zoning because there is some commercial zoning slightly to the east of this, I believe it's general use LB there along Dalton Road. However, given the site's location in the rural residential area in GMA 5, the lack of direct access to the site, and the fact that the requested use is inconsistent with both the recommendations of Legacy 2030 and the Western Rural Area Development Assessment, staff believes that this request is inappropriate at this location. This was heard by the planning board at their March 14th, 2024, public hearing. There was one speaker in opposition, and that opposition did voice concerns related to the precedent that this was said of rezoned, and the potential visual clutter that would accompany outdoor advertising in this otherwise rural area. There's no other outdoor advertising for a 10-mile stretch. Following the public hearing and discussion, the planning board did vote to recommend denial to the Commissioners by a vote of five to three. And with that, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chris?
Mr. Chairman, I just had one question, just to clarify, the commercial zone property that's somewhere nearby, that's not adjacent to 421, is it?
It is. If you look on the, if you look on the image there and that image there, that LB is a piece of property that does extend off of the interchange along US 421, but it's a, it is an irregularly shaped piece of property, I'm not sure how viable it actually is, but there is commercial zoning actually directly adjacent to this.
But what uses would be allowed in that?
Low intensity commercial uses, certainly not a sign off premise. LB would allow probably a small retail store, a, probably a smaller food or drug store. It would not allow a convenience store, it would allow offices. Again, I'm specula, the ones I told you I know are allowed, obviously there are others, but it's not a very intense commercial district, thus the name limited business.
Wouldn't typically be a, an off premises sign?
Correct. Specifically, an off premise sign is only allowed in, I believe, the HB, LI, GI, and maybe GB zoning districts.
Okay, thank you.
Good. Other questions for Mr. Murphy? All righty. This is a public hearing, and speakers will have up to 15 minutes total to speak in favor of this request, and up to 15 minutes total to speak in opposition. And I do have a timer, keep track of it. Is there anyone wishing to speak in favor of this petition? If you would come forward and just tell us your name and address when you speak, then you can just jump right ahead.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I am Attorney Mark Chiarrello, here representing Tribam, address is 301 North Main Street, Winston-Salem. And I have shepherded this through the early parts of the process, it complies with the technical requirements. My clients are asking for the absolute minimum up zone to allow this specific use. It's not a foot in the door for more intense use down the road. I do understand it's in GMA 5. I don't think this is glaringly inconsistent, it is next to an existing commercial zone, and again, it's never going to be anything else. It's an absolute minimum for this specific limited use. I believe Forsyth County has a tool to limit billboards. It's the scenic view corridor, and we're not in it. All of the surrounding highways were placed in the scenic view corridor, this was excluded. I don't know why, I didn't participate in that decision, but it was. It was intentionally left out of the scenic view corridor where billboards are excluded. The relevant section of the UDO says ground signs off premises are permitted only in the district shown in the table, and only along designated roads, which are not identified as view corridors. I think that the county had the opportunity to set out areas where there shouldn't be billboards, it did, this is not one of them. So as it complies with the technical requirements, it's the minimum up zone, and it's not in the view corridor, we ask for your favorable consideration. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you, appreciate your time.
Any others that would like to speak in favor of the petition? See no one, is there anyone who would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Yes, please come up and just identify your name and address also, we're good.
I am David Taylor and live at 8401 Shaliford Road. My residential property is within 500 feet of and across US 421 from the subject parcel. Before we moved to Winston-Salem, we researched the nearby zoning and believed it would help protect the enjoyment and value of our property, just as it did as a city resident. The Legacy 2030 Plan states that Forsyth County's natural beauty, rural character, and agricultural resources are among its most important features. The plan also calls to reduce the impact of large signs and preserve rural views. This plan and agriculture and residential zoning have served Forsyth County well. I am unaware of any billboard between US, on US 21, between the Yadkin County line and Silas Creek Parkway. For travelers heading south on US 421, the billboard and advertisers' messages will deliver one of the first impressions of Forsyth County. For the northbound traffic, it will be one of the last impressions. There is significant ongoing cost of a billboard that would be borne by local residents and the public. I believe the value of my home could be negatively impacted, as the sightline to the planned billboard is over a small wooded valley 50 feet lower than my home site. I suspect a brightly lit billboard, potentially 35 feet tall, with rotating advertisements will be very visible over the trees growing in these lower elevations. The 27,000 daily travelers that pass by would be distracted by the initial and continued removal of native trees, exposing the double-sided views of a large billboard instead of the uninterrupted natural landscape that now exists. The absentee property owner would never have to see the structure or bear these costs. I understand the financial incentives of the rezoning request. However, at the time of the parcel's purchase less than a year ago, the new owner should have known its zoning was residential, and its deed included a restriction that no business of any type is allowed on the property. While historians are actively researching exactly where the historic Great Wagon Road crossed through the area, it is very possible it was on nearby Shaliford Road. The state recently invested 2 million, more than $2 million for the acquisition of the Shaliford State Historic Site, a 246 acre parcel on Shaliford Road. En route to the site, a billboard at the proposed location would be very visible to visitors crossing the Shaliford Road Bridge. We should respect and conserve, not blemish, the scenic and historical nature of this area of Forsyth County. Your decision today will have long-term implications regarding how this area will look for future generations. Previous generations have helped conserve Forsyth County's rich history and natural assets. Now it's our opportunity. Therefore, I urge this board to preserve the current historical, residential, and agricultural nature of this area and decline this request. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there others that would like to speak in opposition to the petition? Just tell us your name and address.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My name is Mike Corn, I'm the mayor of Lewisville, my fair city on the western side of Forsyth County. Proud to be here with you all today, Commissioners, it's good to see you. I'm here representing the residents of Lewisville to speak, to ask for you to support the recommendation of your planning board to deny this petition. I think there are a number of reasons, which I believe we stated in a resolution that we've passed out to you prior to this, and I believe I've also communicated with you in an email here recently elaborating more on those reasons. You know, I was, I was thinking as the previous speakers were making their comments, and Commissioner Linville, Commissioner Wisenhut, Commissioner Plyler, we've been around a while. I think Mr. Linville has the honor, distinction from being around the longest, but what we've learned, or at least I've learned in 27 years of public service, is never say never. You will not know what this property will be. A future petitioner could come before you, a whole different set of commissioners, and could also reverse whatever you, or expand on whatever you approve today or not approve today. I think the main reason that I'm appearing before you is that the precedent that this could set in that particular area. For those of you who have driven to the beach, there's a stretch of road there that every 100 yards you see a billboard for a personal injury lawyer. I don't believe that's the case, or that's the view, or that's the vision that we have for Forsyth County. This is a wonderful county we live in. This particular corridor is probably one of the last pristine areas for visitors entering our community and visitors leaving our community. Therefore, just briefly, I ask you again to deny this petition. And if you would reflect back on a 2001 letter that we sent to the Commission and the planning board, asking you to consider making this particular section of 421 a view corridor and including it in your view corridor designations. With that, any questions that you have, I'd be glad to answer. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to speak against the petition? There are none, I'll declare the hearing closed. Thank you. Do we have a motion? Or any discussion, any questions for Chris before we go on? Have a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to deny zoning map amendment F-1639 in statement of consistency with comprehensive plan. I move that zoning map amendment F-1639, including special use limited district permit, be denied on the basis of the following. The proposed limited use zoning map amendment, as petitioned by Tribam Investments LLC to rezone a .42 acre piece of property from RS40 to LIL, limited industrial limited use signs off premises, is inconsistent with the recommendations of the Legacy Comprehensive Plan, and is neither reasonable nor in the public interest because, one, the subject property wooded and undeveloped land located north of US 421, west of the Shaliford Road interchange, with an address of 705 Dalton Court, is currently zoned RS40, and is surrounded by property zoned RS40 and LB, with surrounding uses of a highway and undeveloped land. Two, the proposed LIL zoning is primarily intended to accommodate limited manufacturing, wholesaling, warehousing, research and development, and related commercial and service activities, which in their normal operations have little or no adverse effect upon adjoining properties, and to provide locations for industrial development in Growth Management Areas 1, 2, 3, and 4, and in metro activity centers. Three, the subject property does not have access to public water or sewer, and four, the subject property is located in Growth Management Area 5, for which LI zoning is not intended, and the allowed use is inconsistent with Legacy's recommendation to reduce the visual impact of large signs throughout the county, and to consider preserving rural views, and is inconsistent with surrounding uses and with the Western Rural Area Development Assessment, which recommends retaining the current character of the area.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Bessie and second by Commissioner McDaniel. Is there any discussion? All in favor of the motion, which is to deny the petition, please hold up your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. All right.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm going to ask perhaps the attorney to come up. It's my understanding through an email exchange earlier this week that with the denial of 1639, that they would wish to withdraw F-1640, but I'll let him confirm that.
All righty.
Thank you, Commissioners. The other matter is directly tied to this, and there's no reason to go forward with it without, we will withdraw. Thank you.
Thank you for the clarification. The next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing April 14 through 20, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week in Forsyth County, North Carolina. And I think we have several representatives from the Sheriff's Office and Emergency Services Telecommunications here to accept the resolution, and I'd like to invite all of you to please come forward. And Commissioner McDaniel is going to read the resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Whereas Forsyth County telecommunications, telecommunications serve the citizens of Forsyth County, North Carolina, by answering requests for law enforcement, fire, and emergency medical services. Whereas Forsyth County telecommunications are a vital link for our sheriff's department's deputies, firefighters, paramedics, EMTs, and animal care officers by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety while performing their respective duties within the communities. Whereas Forsyth County telecommunications have contributed sustainably to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fires, and treatment of patients by using up-to-date technology to aid first responders in the execution of their duties. Whereas Forsyth County telecommunications are professionals who work to improve the emergency services responses capabilities of communicating through their knowledge and their experience, and who work continuously to provide high-level care of, high-level of care for the citizens of Forsyth County. And whereas Forsyth County telecommunications exhibit professionalism, efficiency, and compassion in the discharge of their duties, utilizing the well, we care principles for Forsyth County as a model for their actions. Chairman, now therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby declares the week of April 14th, 2024, through April 20th, 2024, as National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, in honor of the Forsyth County telecommunications who play a critical role in the protection and preservation of life and property. Adopted this 18th day, 2024. Thank you.
I'll second your motion. All in favor, please raise your right hand. Thank you. And we thank all of you for the work that you do. I think we have a lot of high-pressure positions in our county, and you guys are in one of them. And so I appreciate the work that you do, and if you turn around, we're going to get a couple pictures here. Do a, look at the picture. Next item on the agenda is a resolution recognizing April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Forsyth County, North Carolina. I'd like to invite Adrian Turner, our Social Services Division Director, up to front, and maybe others, to accept that resolution, so please come forward. And Vice Chair Wisenhut is going to read the resolution, so if you all can gather around, Vice Chair Wisenhut will begin.
The entire room.
Yeah, to our studio audience.
Resolution recognizing April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Forsyth County, North Carolina. Whereas in federal FY 2022 through 2023, there were approximately 3.1 million reports made to child protective services agencies across the country. Whereas child abuse and neglect are serious problems affecting every segment of our community, and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone in our community. Whereas our children are our most valuable resource and will shape the future of the world and Forsyth County. Whereas child abuse can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects that have lasting consequences for victims of abuse. Whereas effective child abuse prevention strategies succeed because of the partnerships created between child welfare, education, healthcare, community faith-based organizations, business, and law enforcement agencies. Whereas we acknowledge that we must work together as a community to increase awareness about child abuse and advocate for the social, emotional, and well-being needs of children and families to thrive in safe, stable, and nurturing environments. Whereas within Forsyth County, there are active partnerships between several community partners to proactively address child abuse, including Forsyth County Department of Social Services and Public Health, Bridges to Hope, The Partnering Path, The Guardian Ad-Lidium Program, Family Services, Adrian Wake Forest Hospital, Novant Health, Winston-Salem Forsyth County School System, Forsyth County Sheriff's Office, Winston-Salem Police Department, and the Forsyth County District Attorney's Office, all of which comprise the Community Child Protective Team and the Child Fatality Prevention Team in Forsyth County. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Forsyth County Board of Commissioners hereby recognizes April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Forsyth County. And in April 2024 as Child Abuse Prevention Month in Forsyth County, and encourages all citizens, community agencies, faith-based groups, and medical facilities to increase participation in the effort of the Forsyth County Department of Social Services to prevent child maltreatment and strengthen the community in which we live. That's our motion, Mr. Chairman.
I will second the motion. Very good. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We'd like to thank all of you for the work that you do to protect our children and families, many different agencies here. We really appreciate you coming, you know, to accept this, and we appreciate what you do every day. If you turn around, I think we can get us a nice picture.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is a resolution in support of the construction of a left-turn lane at the intersection of Highway 66 and Watkins Road in Forsyth County. Do we have a motion to approve that?
Approve.
Move approval by Commissioner Linville. Second. Got seconded by Commissioner Plyler. Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your right hand. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously. Next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes for the meeting of April 4, 2024. Have a motion?
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler. I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Thank you very much. Motion carries unanimously. Madam Clerk, do we have any calls or cards for the public session?
Mr. Chairman, we don't have any callers, but we have four speaker cards.
Thank you. Please invite them.
Our first speaker is Jenny Easter. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
Jenny Easter, 5120 Paramount Road, Poughtown, North Carolina, 27040. Good afternoon. I hope you all are doing well. For those of you who do not know me, I am Jenny Easter, and I'm the President of Forsyth County Association of Educators. That is our local public school staff union. I wanted to come before you today, like I did last year, to request that you consider and vote to hold the county budget meetings on June 10, 11, 12, and 13 at 6:00 evening time. Last year, at the request of your constituents, you came together and changed the budget hearing for us to be able to attend. But you still kept the budget discussion workshops and the final vote in the middle of the day when we could not attend. While I know several citizens and community organizations have already reached out to you all for this request, they have encountered the same responses that we have heard over and over, which is, if you cannot attend in person, the county commission offers a call-in phone comment or an email correspondence. I don't know if it's obvious or not, but for the same reason that the public cannot attend in person at a 2:00 meeting on a weekday, that's the same reason that it hinders us from being able to call in and speak. We are all at work. And while I and many others have reached out before through email, we do not always get responses from a select few. So please forgive us if we are skeptical about all of our emails being read by the whole commission board. I appreciate the consideration for all of the options provided for this democratic process.
You feel good.
Okay. But being an advocate, I know full well that being physically present is instrumental in learning about the process. It does help you out to put a face with a name and a story. As you can see, I'm a full-release president, which offers a somewhat more flexible schedule than my fellow educators. But I am still a mother of two beautiful children who attend Winston-Salem Forsyth County Public Schools, and their elementary school dismisses at 3:00. So to attend this 2:00 meeting, even with a flexible schedule, I had to go sign my children out early because I knew I would not get back in time to get them from pickup. So I hope that last year showed you that we can fill up two whole rooms and speak for two and a half hours, and that we are dedicated and concerned that you hear us and properly fund our education and our schools in this county. We are a community that wants to be in an active process of this, and I hope that you find it imperative to make this convenient for your constituents. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Our next speakers are Tracy Ross and Michelle Spees. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
Good afternoon. I'm Michelle Spees. I'm the Chief Operating Officer of Family Services. Our address is 1200 South Broad Street, Winston-Salem. I'm actually going to read a statement to you on behalf of one of our employees whose car had car trouble and is not able to join us today, if you permit me to do so. Good afternoon. My name is Kristen, and I have the privilege of working for Family Services, Inc. I've been with FSI for almost two years, and I love what we do. I love being able to go home at night knowing that what I did today made a difference in someone else's life. I also love knowing the fact that when I needed help, there was an organization like FSI out there to help me. Twenty-some years ago, at the age of 19, I found myself and my 18-month-old daughter in a very abusive domestic situation. It was me and her against the world because she was all that I had, and we had nowhere else to go that was safe. Luckily, I was given the phone number to a domestic violence shelter. The ladies at the shelter came and picked me and my daughter up, gave us a roof over our heads, food in our bellies, and most importantly, a sense of peace and safety. My daughter and I slept that night for the first time in a long time, knowing that we were safe, and no one was going to come in screaming or yelling, no more wall punching, the things breaking, no more crying and screaming, no more fear. I didn't know how long we were going to be at that shelter, but for that night, it didn't matter. Just one night knowing we were safe and the resources I was given at that shelter gave me the ability to figure out my next steps to keep us that way. When you're always afraid and always watching and waiting, your mind is never able to think about next steps. When you live in constant chaos, it's almost impossible to believe that it will ever be anything more than chaos. Being able to get out of that situation, being safe and protected, helped me figure out next steps, helped me plan, helped me reconnect with my family members that I'd been isolated from. My daughter and I stayed a week, and my mom was able to come get me and took us home with her. Because of my week at the shelter, I was able to reconnect with my mother, and now I'm here alive, a grandmother, working for Family Services to help others who live in chaos, who just need a moment, a safe and good night's sleep, so they too can think of next steps. Thank you.
Tracy Ross, CEO. For 40 years, Family Services has been providing safety, hope, and healing for the survivors in our domestic violence shelter. In the past five years alone, we've served 829 unduplicated guests in the emergency shelter and provided 32,843 nights of housing for women, children, and other survivors. The original part of the building that we operate is now failing, and as we move into the future, we are committed to build a campus that serves survivors. We're asking you to consider our application to help us fund this new project. Thank you for your time today.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Lee Childress. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Lee Childress. I reside at 5703 Beaver Pond Trail, Poughtown, North Carolina. I apologize, but I'll have to skedaddle. I'm a 17-year-old EC, or teacher of students with disabilities in the district. I'm currently en route from my job to my after-school program, but I wanted to stop by and piggyback a little bit what Jenny said. Last year, we were able to move the public hearing for the budget to the evening, and we filled this auditorium and an overflow auditorium. I would like you to move the public comments section and the budget as well. I think it gives stakeholders or taxpayers the best opportunity to attend, as many are at work at 2:00. I do know there's a call-in section, but typically I'm with kids and I'm not, would not be able to participate in that. This year's budget is our most important. Public education, public safety, nonprofit organizations, and some solid businesses need our support. Holding this meeting in the evening ensures that a vast majority of people, or taxpayers, are off work and able to attend. I certainly hope that you will consider this so that folks can be able to participate in learning where our tax dollars really go. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, we have an additional speaker card, and then we did have someone call in online, so we have two speaker cards left and one caller.
We'll go ahead and do the speaker cards that were here, and then we'll get the caller.
Our next speaker is Suzanne Eppermanis. Please come forward. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Suzanne Eppermanis. My address is 204 Canterbury Trail, Winston-Salem, North Carolina, 27104. And I'm not here representing any organization or affiliation today, just myself as a resident. So thank you very much for the opportunity to speak with you today, Commissioners. In fact, opportunity is one of two key themes that I'd like to emphasize today. But first, I'd like to thank you for your service toward County. No one sitting in this room can imagine the challenges of your job better than you. No one knows them, no one can imagine them, so I just want to stop and say thanks for the hard work that you do. But back to opportunity. In the next two months, you'll be hearing presentations and having discussions before deciding on our county's new budget for the coming year. Every budget is an opportunity to discuss the needs of our residents, the resources of our community, the values we hold in common, and how all these factors shape our priorities. The budget is a public statement of our priorities and what we value most. And because deciding our budget is probably the single most important task of the county commissioners, I'm puzzled as to why we don't make it easier for residents to access these discussions in person as they are happening. Access is the second theme I'd like to emphasize today. We all know that access is critical for providing opportunity to participate. Giving citizens the chance to watch a meeting livestream or later via recordings is not the same as being present in person. Offering folks the option to call in with comments or questions or email them in advance, again, is helpful, but it is not as impactful as being in the room where it happens. I know that Forsyth County Commissioners used to meet at 6:00 PM for regular meetings up until March of 2016. After that, regular meetings were moved to 4:00 PM, and by October 2016, the new meeting time was 2:00 PM for the regular public type of meetings as we're having today. For seven and a half years, these meetings have been held at a time when anyone working a daytime job would find it hard, if not impossible, to attend. I'm sure there were and are pros and cons to changing regular meetings to evenings, but I'm fairly certain that an evening meeting would give more of our county residents and taxpayers more opportunity to participate in the governing process and give you folks more opportunity to hear more easily from the folks you represent. So knowing that data is important to most good decision-making, I decided to do a random sample of 20 counties in North Carolina. I started with all of the counties contiguous to Forsyth, other metro counties that we always like to compare ourselves to, and then I just had fun. I just came up with a random list of 20 different counties, including odd, well, don't say oddballs, Suzanne, but Duplin, Scotland, Rockingham, Catawba, New Hanover, Alaman's, I was just kind of thinking of non-alphabetical, just random counties. So of these 20 counties, again, just random, per their county websites, 15 of them had all of their regular meetings at 5:00 PM or later, mostly at 6:00 or 7:00 PM. So that was 15 out of the 20. The other five counties had all their regular meetings, I'm sorry, they had one daytime meeting and one evening meeting each month. The bottom line is, none of them had all of their regular meetings during the daytime. All of them had at least one evening meeting, and most, 75% of them, had only evening meetings. So I didn't have time to check all 100 counties, but my guess is the pattern probably would have continued to show the clear majority. So I would like to suggest, here's my action item, let's try an experiment. Let's go back to evening meetings for the next six months. Let's measure how much more citizen participation we get in decision-making in terms of attendance, comments, and questions. Maybe we even need to hold a refresher course in good manners and civic discourse, if that would be helpful. If the experiment does not meet our expectations, let's evaluate what happened and look for other ways to increase access and opportunity for more folks to participate. Since the single largest item in our current year's budget is education, which is 32% of our general fund budget for this current year, and I'm guessing it may likely be the same single largest item next year, your decision to move the Commissioners' regular meetings to an evening time slot would be a powerful way to show that you want to hear firsthand from more working parents and educators most affected by the budget decisions on education. So let's take a cue from our neighbors in other counties. Let's try going back to evening meetings, and let's give greater access and opportunity for more folks to more fully participate in the discussions. If we do this, our decision-making will be better informed, and I believe it will be easier for you folks to do your job of making decisions that more fully represent the true values and priorities of our county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Our last speaker card in the subjects line is funding for Family Services. Young man, do you mind coming up? Thank you.
Well, you've convinced me that I need to proceed with my hearing aids. I couldn't hear anything. My name's Woody Kleiner. I've lived in Forsyth County for 94 years. And as an avenue of transparency, I was president of Family Services in the 60s. Another credential, I think, that has some value is that I've been a, was a 20-year volunteer reading tutor. And the significance of that is that I tutored kids who had experienced various kinds of trauma, and certainly domestic violence is an obvious trauma for these kids. And I have two observations this very day. As I was driving down Peters Creek Parkway, beside me at the traffic light was a city bus, and on that city bus, can you guess how you people are associated with what I read? Your Forsyth County government cares. And so you have an opportunity to prove that today. Something that, I received an email later this morning after I returned home, and a friend of mine granddaughter, her granddaughter was a victim of domestic violence. She is dead and leaves an infant. And that is such a poignant effect on me, too. So thanks for considering this issue.
Thank you, Mr. Kleiner. Appreciate your generosity over the years.
Mr. Chairman, our last speaker is on the phone.
Good, thank you.
Thank you for calling Forsyth County Board of Commissioners' Public Session Line. Please state your name and address for the record.
Jackie Sebold, 4153 Gray Tuck Drive, Winston-Salem.
Thank you. Speakers will be limited to three minutes each. You may begin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm calling in again this month, as I did last month. I'm calling in again this month, as I did last month, to find out about the ongoing situation on Temple School Road that's, I'm calling on behalf of all my neighbors. The sandblasting continues. The last update that we received, I passed on to my neighbors from County Manager Watts that we received last month. We've had to make calls. Stephen Berry from the Environmental Section has been out here as recent, as recently as this week, because the noise was pretty loud. Some of the, some of the things that were mentioned in the last update were switching to laser sandblasting, which was supposed to be quiet and less disturbing, but right now, it just, it seems like nothing has changed at all, and it's ramping up again because, I suppose, because of the weather. But just wanted to make you aware that, you know, we're still here and we're still dealing with it and are still hopeful that something can be done, and just wondering if there's any updates of this possibly reaching a resolution. That's basically it. Just want to thank you for all you're doing, and thank you for letting me speak today.
Thank you.
Is there any further update that you know of on that?
I, we forwarded that last update. I will get the most recent information from minor. I've not heard from him since he had staff out there this week, but find out. I'll get it to you and share it with Ms. Sebold.
Good, thank you. Mr. County Manager, I think we are ready to continue with the agenda now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, Board members and staff and guests. We do have some business items for consideration that we've reviewed in briefing sessions and hopefully have answered all your questions and modified the agenda items a couple places where it made sense to, but I'll go ahead and dive into those. Agenda item eight is an amendment to the 2016 Schools' Capital Project Ordinance to appropriate interest earnings to pay for the yield reduction payment owed to the IRS related to the 2019 A and B General Obligation Public Improvement Bonds. This essentially makes an arbitrage payment that was planned and kind of expected of $174,407.98. And so, that is it.
Need approval.
A motion by Vice Chair Wizard Hunt?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item nine is an amendment to the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget Ordinance that appropriates $231,802 from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for Agreement Addenda 719, the Bridge Access Program. This actually increases COVID-19 vaccines for underinsured and uninsured populations.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Bessie?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Wizard, Vice Chair Wizard, any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 10 is an amendment to the Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget Ordinance that appropriates $73,798 from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services for Agreement Addenda 874, food and lodging, and these are pretty open grant funds. They support any eligible activity in food and lodging. I will say we had the budget meeting this week, and in that, we talked about where they were in terms of a way of on-time restaurant inspections and so on and so forth, and that data appears very good, and so actually remarkably good, particularly compared with other urban counties, so.
Need approval.
A motion by Vice Chair Wizard?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 11 is a resolution approving the Community-Based Juvenile Delinquency Substitution Gang Prevention Plan for Fiscal Year 2024-2025 and authorizing its submission for state approval and implementation. There is a list of programs in the agenda item. Mr. Chairman, unless you want me to kind of read through those recipients, but there are, as usual, a large number of recipients, then we do rely on the nonprofit sector to get that work done, and so, but I'll be happy to read those or just take a vote as.
Move approval.
Yeah, we had a chance to look at those both last week, and as I recall, there's a couple of minor changes.
That's actually the next one, is the revision. This is actually the plan moving forward.
I saw that, too. Saw, I saw both. Anybody want to have more discussion about that or look at it?
Move approval.
A motion approved by Commissioner Plyler?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion?
I do have one question, Chair. Sorry, let me put. When do we get an update on the effectiveness of these programs?
So, we do monitoring of these programs. The council does twice a year, one's in person and one is virtual, and there are monitoring reports that they do have to submit to the state. So, we can certainly provide you with the last monitoring reports, and then there'll be an annual report that comes out that shows how the programs are performing.
I would appreciate it. Thank you.
All right, very good.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
And Agenda item 12 is the revision, it's a resolution approving the second revision of the 2023-2024 Juvenile Crime Prevention Council Funding Plan. This releases $15,377 from Trad, Trad Restorative Justice, actually from two programs. It actually funds Trad Restorative Justice and $3,850 in the YMCA Work and Earn It Program, $11,527.
Move approval.
Second.
A motion approved by Commissioner Plyler, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
We have a couple of grant items. Item 13 is a resolution authorizing the submission of the application to the North Carolina Department of Natural and Cultural Resources to apply for and accept if awarded an America 250 North Carolina County Committee Grant for Forsyth County. It is a $10,000 grant that provides for strategic planning-type efforts, public art, just a variety of different type of uses with those dollars.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler. They're second.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard, any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 14 has two parts, it's a resolution authorizing execution of the necessary documents to receive funds from Duke University to conduct a four-year research study on the effectiveness of delivering automated external defibrillators, or AEDs, by drone on cardiac 911 calls. You've got an adoption of the 2024 Drone Study Grant Project Ordinance to appropriate those funds being used by, being provided by Duke University to participate in the research study. It is, the grant, the four-year grant amount is $459,200.
Move approval.
A motion approved by Commissioner Plyler?
Second.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? I'd just like to make one comment. I thought that was a pretty spectacular presentation we had last week, and it's kind of, kind of cutting-edge without a doubt. For those of you who did not hear it, basically, we'll be the first community in the United States to actually experiment with drone-delivered defibrillators. There's one other, I guess Sweden in the world actually is doing that, so it's been a great project. Anyway, any other discussion?
I will reiterate that I'm concerned for the elderly.
Yes, in fact, we, again, we saw a map of the, where we have the largest number of, basically, heart-related calls, and it comes from an area where if you had, if you had a star listed for every, you know, basically nursing home, assisted living facility, it's in that, in that corridor, in that area. So, it was, this has a lot of promise, and that was very, that was very interesting. No further discussion? All in favor, please hold up your right hand. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Very good. Have a number of contractual items for consideration. Item 15 is a resolution authorizing execution of an agreement with EMS Management Consultants Incorporated to provide medical billing and collection services for Forsyth County Emergency Medical Services Division of Emergency Services. It is a three-year agreement. The main driver is the, kind of the net, net collection cost is 3.85% of what is collected. There's a few other details around that, but it was competitively bid, and we are selecting the lowest responsible bidder, in fact, the lowest price bidder as well. And you will see, it actually is a little less, to your point, Mr. Chairman, a little less than the rate last year, and you'll see that reflected in the budget that we present here in a couple of months.
Move approval.
Good, motion approved by Commissioner Plyler.
Second.
We have two seconds, Commissioner Limble and Vice Chair Wizard, any other discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 16 is a resolution authorizing execution of agreement with Pulse Point Foundation for Pulse Point Respond Read-Only CAD Software for Forsyth County Emergency Medical Services, not to exceed $64,000, and that is kind of an innovative effort around garnering expertise in the community to respond to those.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler. They're second.
Second.
Second from Commissioner Limble. I do have one question. I thought of from last week, and the question really surrounds other places that that has been used. I know it's been on the market, and I'm just kind of curious. It's, I'm curious of the utilization is what I'm curious. I feel confident it works and all that, but the other part of it is it requires humans to respond and to be in an area that it really makes a difference. I'm kind of curious about that.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, and thank you for that question, Chairman Martin. There are several other communities. In fact, I used it in my last community before I came here. There's, Portland, Oregon uses it, they use it up in Canada. There's other communities around the country that do use it. Their, their website is full of good stories about folks that use it, but we know what, we would all expect that that would be the case, right? I've had the gentleman that we're dealing with on Pulse Point has, has, you know, shared some data and shows success rate in community advocacy or community use when combined with community education and training, and that's one of the things that we're talking about as well with all of this, that we will be doing a bunch of outreach and community outreach. And, you know, as the sheriff mentioned, when we were talking about the drone project, we're doing the library tours and those kinds of things, and so it will be, make sure that as we talk about all of these things, that Pulse Point will be one of those and that we educate the community effectively to get the word out.
Good, that helps, thanks. I appreciate that.
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? All in favor, please hold your hand up, please. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you.
Agenda item 17 is a resolution authorizing execution of agreement with Municipal Emergency Services Incorporated for the purchase of turnout gear for Forsyth County Emergency Medical Services. It is ARPA-funded, it is 58 sets of turnout gear for those staff.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bessie. Any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 18 is a resolution awarding a contract for inmate healthcare delivery services for law enforcement detention center to NAF Care Incorporated. It is a very large, costly part of the detention center's budget. This is a three-year agreement with fixed cost of $19,454,891.52. There is additional costs associated with off-site claims, which are a natural part of that, and then also for the variable costs that are related, and then also the behavioral health clinics in both of those facilities. But hats off to the, the group that, of staff across departments that participated in that bidding process and the response process. They did a terrific job in, in basically evaluating all that and also looking at firms out there who provide these type services. NAF Care is our current provider, and so this would extend their agreement.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler, second by Commissioner McDaniel. Any discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 19 is a resolution approving the purchase of law enforcement ammunition under an exception to the bidding laws codified in North Carolina general statutes, awarding a contract to Kessler Police Supply in amount not to exceed $78,822.82. You heard a presentation about sort of the difficulties they had.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard, any discussion? All in favor, please hold your hand up, please. Thank you. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 20 is a resolution ratifying a payment for automotive repair work and remount services to NWEV LLC. This will authorize payment for that vehicle that was wrecked and got caught up in all the complexities of the insurance side of it to, for the amount to settle it out at $103,888.9.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Limble. Any discussion? I just got one comment. The, I think everything was as it should be, but it seems like, except for, it seems like the, the third-party contract reviewer kind of omission of some issues and of timely matter that kept this thing dragging out there, and then I guess there's an interesting question on traveler's payment. I mean, I'm just kind of curious about, on the amount, kind of, kind of curious how that, how that happened, and maybe it's time to look at three-party, you know, review service contracts, if you will, for that kind of work.
Yeah, it was, you know, we had not had, had issues with that. It, you know, it, it was a bit of a one-off, particularly, you know, when, when part of the decision-making that goes in that says, is it totaled or not totaled, and then, and then is it replacement value or not replacement value? We had the conversation in the briefing sessions about replacement value.
Welcome to the audio conferencing center. Please enter a conference ID followed by pound.
Where is that?
There's a ghost in the machine somewhere.
We lost connection on Teams, and we had to call back in.
Oh, okay. Gotcha. So, yeah, so it had, really had to do with, with replacement value. We met with our insurance consultant actually this week or last week, time gets away from me, but, you know, given, replacement value would be very, very expensive to try to pursue that, because really, it's just a financial, financial matter, and so we actually came up with some guidelines in that that we can certainly share with the board about, you know, when we will fully insure something and when we will not, but.
Just to interject, Mr. Manager, just coincidentally, we are in the process of RFP for a third-party administrator, and so Human Resources is in the process of reviewing applications and proposals for that, and that'll come before the board.
Yeah, that's good. Any other discussion? All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Item 21 is a resolution awarding and authorizing a contract for the purchase of five Nissan Sentra cars, amount not to exceed $113,690. A portion of these are actually funded with some COVID dollars. We did check on the Versa thing. It is a little bit cheaper. The, I think the primary element was the, the Sentra is a little bit bigger, and it's just a cargo issue, but.
Move approval.
I tell you, we have a motion approved by, we'll get a discussion. Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard. A discussion?
You know, I think you're siding with my wife.
Okay.
She likes the Sentra.
That's the winning side. I'm glad to be on that side.
Yeah, I like the Versa, but I'll vote for this.
Well, I'll make one anecdotal comment. My, my vehicle was rear-ended about two weeks ago, and the rental car provided to me was a Nissan Sentra. And I, I, before you even commented on this, Commissioner Bessie, I actually noticed as I pulled up at a red light, I was next to a Versa, and I said, my, that is a small car in comparison, in comparison to this one. And it really does have a lot of room in it. I've been, I've been driving it about two weeks, and it's, I was impressed for a car that, that price. I was impressed. Anyway, sorry about that. Any other discussion?
That was a great endorsement.
Any other discussion or anecdotal stories?
Right.
Sorry. All in favor, please raise your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
Agenda item 22 is a resolution awarding and authorizing an execution of a contract with AA Security Services Incorporated for security services at County Parks. Three-year agreement not to exceed 1,000, $1,39,294 that was competitively bid.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler?
Second.
Second by Vice Chair Wizard. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please hold your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
All right. Item 23 is a resolution authorizing execution of an amendment to, to the agreement between Forsyth County and Winston Valuations for Real Estate Appraisal Services. We are heading down the road to get the reappraisal done here. This is an amount not to exceed, or adding $75,000 to the current contract if we need it.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Limble. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
And Agenda item 24 is a resolution approving and authorizing execution of a memorandum of agreement between Forsyth County and North Carolina State University, Go Wolf Pack, for cooperative extension, and this is essentially the guiding agreement for how, how those cooperatively funded employees are funded. We're really moving towards them being. We're really moving towards them being locked into the state system, which will simplify and clarify things.
Move approval.
Motion approved by Commissioner Plyler. They're second. Second by Vice Chair Wizzenhut. Any discussion? I'm glad you made that progress on that, because that needs to be done, and I'm glad you're making movement in that direction. That's good. Any other discussion? All in favor, please hold up your hand. Motion carries unanimously.
That is it for business in the formal side of the meeting, I believe, unless you have anything else.
No, good, very good. Well, I have one other thing, and I think it's somebody's birthday today, and it is Commissioner McDaniel, and we'd like to wish you a happy birthday. And by the way, there's somebody here that would like to give you a special birthday message.
Oh, my gosh.
Chairman, are you going to give her a car?
No, I'm not.
Oh, my goodness.
I would like to thank you for this opportunity. I was excited about today. I had a nice arrangement for your birthday present, and lo and behold, I left it at home. Didn't it? What's that, little one? I forgot something. Well, what did I forget? Oh, okay. What is this? An engagement ring? Uh-oh.
Oh, my goodness.
This time, Denise, you're dead. Look forward to an engagement with you. I hope so, Dad.
Y'all called me about that, and I said, well, I guess we have to leave that just being
Oh, my goodness.
Mr. Chairman, I've been on this board for a long time, and before that, we used to cover the county commissioners, and I've never, ever seen a man come in front of a group like this and ask a beautiful girl like that to marry him, and she said yes.
I did say yes.
It was the first time for everything.
Chairman, if I may, in all of my emotions, thank you so very much, but as a board member for Smart Start, you're getting an award today for the Pioneer's Award for your advocacy in education, and I wanted to tell you thank you. Unfortunately, I can't be there with you today, I'm becoming a bride, so I've got work to do, but nevertheless, congratulations, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you all, and thank you, my love.
We probably ought to recess for a little bit, I would imagine. Yeah, that's right. Let's take about a 10-minute recess. Thank you.
Whether I could see my watch at 10 minutes, I think we missed that by just a hair. But anyway, congra- well, I was going to congratulate Commissioner McDaniel again, but I'm sure she'll return shortly.
She might be on our honeymoon, who knows?
Or not. That's good. Okay, well, we are called to order for our briefing for the first meeting, first briefing for our May 2nd, 2024 Thursday meeting, and we're going to have two discussion items today, both of which are important ones. And in fact, we have, I'm actually going to make one reverse in the order since we have several folks affiliated with various levels of fire protection here that we might go ahead and do the Forsyth County Fire Service Policy Options first, and our county manager, Mr. Watts Dudley is going to do that one, and then we'll have an update with behavioral health maintenance of effort and opioid settlement funding recommendations from Denise Price following that, and then we'll review the items.
All right, so I'm going to do this using old school technology. Let's see, because I think it'll be helpful, so. I did want to recognize there are members of really leadership of fire services with us, and so as you can see, kind of back on that road, this is obviously very important to them because this is their world, and so I'm glad they are here. And so, kind of really two policy issues I want to talk about a little today. The first one is really generated from a survey we did early in the years. We went out on January 31st. At the staff level, we recognized that, that sales tax revenue was really exceeding expectations, and so there was enough money in that sales tax revenue to fund the entire '09 program. And so, at Fire Chiefs Meeting, we went back out with the Fire Chiefs and said, given that and the fact that you, the board will be in a place to zero out the fire tax, the fire tax, the overlay district, the countywide one, what would you want to do with that money? And so, it was sort of a question about support for the supplemental staffing program that's driven by that, and it was, you know, it was a bigger question, and so I was, I was surprised they actually came back with a unified recommendation on that that was pretty aggressive, kind of to say the least. But it was unified by all the Fire Chiefs, and I think it, what it did is it actually said, you know, we believe in the supplemental staffing program, but what they asked to do was to expand the supplemental staffing program from the current 21 positions, and these are, these are the fire engineers and firefighters who are in three different locations throughout Forsyth County. They're there 24/7, and they are there to supplement the volunteer fire response. It's been very effective. I think it had a real impact on ISO ratings, and so it's been a very, very good program. And they, their recommendation was to expand that supplemental staffing from 21 positions to 39 positions, so it would add 18 new positions. And then they also, because the sales tax, they also said, we want the sales tax revenues back in our home districts. And so, it, it was a very bold, aggressive recommendation, and it's really why I'm bringing it to you so early in this, this year, because we're heading into budget. We need, it's a big thing, you need to be thinking about it. It would increase taxes for everybody served by that program by three point, well, it'd increase it by about 3.1 something.
3.08 on your sheet.
Yeah, thank you very much. And so, you know, it is, and, and the payers of that is everybody who's served by the volunteer system, so it's everybody except those folks that live in Winston-Salem, Kernersville, Walkertown proper, Rural Hall proper. I might be missing somebody. So that is their recommendation. So, as my recommendation that's going to be, I want to be fully transparent, my recommendation that, I wanted to be clear that this is what my recommendation going into the continuation budget is going to be, their recommendation will be part of an alternate service level, so it will be in my recommended, in my submitted budget document as an alternate service level. So it will be there for discussion if you want it. But the other thing that I did, and I shared these with the, the Fire Leadership, is I, I stepped down some options that would be available to you, really down to the status quo, and then included on this actually an option that would, that would actually eliminate the fire tax district altogether. And so, you know, option two is, is, it's a little less costly. It keeps the fire suppression service at the current level, does not expand it, but it would provide that sales tax revenue, and you would at that point put all of the cost of the '09 program on this countywide overlay tax. That costs you about 2.21%. We're going to have to finalize these numbers, but this, as of when we did it, based on what we, the tax base estimates are, that's what we came up with. Option three expands the supplemental staffing program from 21 positions to the 39 they recommended, but leaves the sales tax revenue as it is, but you would have to increase the overlay district rate by that .87 cents, or would increase, put it, put it to that. Option four really is kind of the status quo. You keep fire suppression service at the current level funded with sales tax revenue and provide, you've got some excess revenues, and you've got excess revenues that would be generated annually, because the sales tax revenue over the last two years have kind of gone through the roof, there's actually a pretty substantial balance there. And so you've got some dollars there that obviously would grow, you could actually have some slight expansion of the '09 program as well, and, and, you know, that would, that would leave the rate where it is. And then the last one really is elimination of the rate, but status quo and leaving things the way they are. And so, let me give you my recommendations, and then we'll come back, and I'll ask you if any, if there's any questions. I know this is a complicated system, and the next thing I'm going to talk about, we'll, we'll delve into the complications a little bit as well. But moving into this year's budget, my recommendations are, and this will be what is in my continuation budget. If you decide you wanted to do something different with the alternate service level, you could, obviously that would move the tax rate. But my, my recommendations and what will be in mind is continuing the countywide tax overlay district. I am recommending lowering it a little bit from .0039 to .3, .003, .003, which is basically a little less than a third of a cent on the tax rate. Using these resources to provide non-recurring capital to the '09 programs and some assistance to the departments that did not see, receive ARPA grant funds or state earmarked funds for apparatus. If you remember, the General Assembly funded apparatus for four of really some of the wealthiest fire tax districts that we had that are served in our system. This board funded with ARPA funds four of the departments that were really the, some of the, the most struggling, you know, lower tax-based departments. And so what this would do is we would bring back recommendations for those that were kind of in the middle and the other departments that didn't receive any, any assistance. And so, if it's satisfactory with you, Brock Smith is going to go help try to put together, you know, a request, if, if this sounds good, what are your needs? And we would actually fill in, we would, we would make a recommendation for that one-time capital, really to try to create equity across the system. And the theme for my presentation today really is across both of these policy issues, really equity, because that's something that this system really struggles with, in my opinion, having worked in it for quite a while. The eligible, eligible departments for serving Forsyth County exclusively, exclusively, and these are the ones whose service area is just in Forsyth, because we've got a number of departments that are on the edges, we've got a couple of departments that aren't in Forsyth County that we actually rely on for services, but the ones that are exclusive are Old Richmond, Blues Creek, Beeson's, and Piney Grove. All of them are kind of situated a little bit differently with respect to apparatus and partnerships and so on and so forth, but, but those are those departments. And then I said, some consideration may also be given on an adjusted basis to departments that serve parts of Forsyth and large areas of other counties like Griffith King and Gumtree. Gumtree's actually in Davidson County, and Griffith's, as you know, is right up on Peters Creek Parkway on the line. And then, as I mentioned, the proposal from the Fire Chiefs will be presented as an alternate service level request to facilitate discussion through the process. And so, that is, I wanted, I wanted you early, early on in this process to get the request back from the Fire Chiefs, particularly since it was unanimous. I think the fact that the strength in that was, was, was something that was frankly unexpected for me as we, as we kind of entered this, but, but you needed it, you needed to understand that. You know, as I tell the Fire Chiefs often, their opinion is really important, but what's also important is their volunteer, you know, their volunteer leadership, the folks that serve on their corporation boards and these nonprofits that really guide their operations. And so, you know, my suggestion to them has really always been, you know, it's one thing if you was a Fire Chief asking for money, it is another thing if you've got your board whose really goal is to be that advocacy for you and to also hold your feet to the fire as a business entity. And so, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll hear from some of those folks as we move forward. So that's the first policy issue. It was really the recommendation from the Fire Leadership. Any questions on that?
This may not be on exactly your presentation, but I recall that there's been discussion that some of, of these municipalities may be thinking in terms of moving to a municipal service level and potentially a professional department. Is that related to this discussion?
It's really the second issue. Let me, let me dive, I'll dive into the second issue because you're going to see a little bit more that may even inform you more about that. So as, as we were dealing with that first issue, you know, the, the, really the overlap or the concern, the, the 10,000, you know, pale elephant in the room, it really kind of is equity across, across departments and, and, and really part of our system. And so, I'm going to show you this one first. Well, let me, let me do this one first. All right, so in that column right here, in this, in this column, you can see our fire tax district. We have 25 fire tax districts that, that were formed many, many years ago and were voted in by members of the community at that time. Some of them have gone away, some of them got incorporated and collapsed into municipalities. Some of the fire tax districts are still little elements of like a Forest Hill Fire Tax District. You know, there's, there's, there's dollars there that we've had to kind of divvy up and figure out how to do, but these are voted in fire tax districts. And so, their boundaries are very fixed, and, and fire tax districts are very difficult to move. It takes, it takes notification, action, the board, it's, it's a very, very difficult thing to move. And you can see from our, our, if you look at that first column, the rates on each of these fire tax districts differ. The, the lowest one is six cents for Clemmons, and Clemmons also serves the South Fork District. And so that district had largely gotten, I think, annexed by the city of Winston-Salem, and so, you know, that shrank over time, and then Clemmons kind of got, that's still an unincorporated area that's outside of that original Clemmons Fire Tax District, or Fire Tax District. Maybe incorporated, actually it's probably incorporated outside of that. Anyway, it's got a six cent tax rate, and then the highest is Hornetown. They've got a 15 cent tax rate, and that is the top end. That's North Carolina State General Statute say you can't have any more than, so they are capped out on that. And then when you look at the 16, as that relates to the 16 volunteer fire departments, I mean Clemmons generates with their six cent tax increase, or tax rate, a million nine fifty-three was the revenue for FY23, and then Hornetown's $376,000. Now, they serve some areas in other counties, and so they get other revenue to support their operations, but it gives you a little bit of an idea about kind of how that's situated. And then Salem-Chapel operates exclusively in Forsyth County on $144,000. And so, you get this, and, and with a tax rate of, pull it up, of 14 cents. So you've got that differential, and I say all this, the reason why I'm bringing it to you now is, is you've got this disparity between the, the amount of money that the tax rates generate and the service level. So you got, in Clemmons, you've got a fairly robust paid professional response, and some volunteers have come in, and then other places you've got, you've got much less capacity to actually respond to an event. And so the disparity among it across the system is, is, is pretty significant, and moving into a revaluation next year, the current situation is going to be exacerbated greatly, and I think it's important to deal with this really in advance of this next revow. And so, you know, I bring it to you as, as a complex system. There is a fix. I mean, the fix could, and actually this is, this is part of, the, the fix is, is actually fairly simple in some ways. You've got an overlay rate that generates X number, that you've got separate fire tax districts that generate X number of dollars across the entire system, and then you've got the overlay rate. You could zero out all of the fire tax districts' rates and go to a single rate and then, and provide that fund, use that as the mechanism to fund the fire departments. What this does is, is this basically, you could, you could hold everybody harmless with a 3% increase to their budget for next year for nine cents. So you would take all these disparate rates and you could go to nine cents across that. What would happen across all these rates is in this, this far right column. And so, really you see, Clemmons would be the area most affected. You'd see about a 2.6 cent real property tax increase going from six to nine in Clemmons. You'd see that real tax, you would see a number of departments that are eight and a half have, have, have just a small increase, and then you'd see some pretty drastic reductions. Obviously, the folks that live in the Salem, in the Hornetown fire districts would drop from 15 cents because they're at the max to the nine. And so it would shuffle this around. It is, it, it is disruptive, and, and I think that's why the Fire Chiefs are here today. It is very disruptive because it's moving away from this fire tax district structure that they have lived with forever up until now to this system. It's fairly simple to do. The board could do this fairly simple, and there's, and holding them harmless is fairly simple. But it is a deep policy issue that, that I think the board needed to hear, you needed to hear early, you certainly needed to get it before, you know, sometimes we bring you fire tax district rates, you know, for, through the budget discussions at the 11th hour. I didn't want to do that this year, I wanted to kind of bring that to you much sooner because this is a sea change with respect to that. It would greatly simplify the system. It would also greatly simplify the kinds of issues around fire tax districts and insurance districts and response zones, because you could move those much more nimbly than you can right now. And so there are some real, real benefits to thinking through this, and, and, and I think it needs to be on your mind, and frankly, I think it needs to be on the Fire Chief's mind, and it needs to be on the, the volunteer corporations' leadership kind of scope around things, because it, it is the tool which you could use to actually start creating some equity across service levels and tax rates across the system. Now, having said that, I recognize that change is hard and, and that you need to not go into things blindly, and so my recommendations around this that I want to leave with you really is a work program that Chantel and her staff's going to have to, have to navigate over the next, along with Chantel's here, here doing the good work. It really does create pretty much of a work program, and so my recommendations are to begin discussions early in the fiscal year, early next year. So we would leave the system as it is going into this budget year, but begin discussions early in the fiscal year with the departments that have expressed that the volunteer system no longer serves the needs of their community and wish to transition to a municipal service level. There are two, two departments that have done that. We've heard that from the Walkertown Fire Chief has said, he has said, we really are not a volunteer fire system, and which is, they do have volunteers, but he sees that that system, that move into a municipal system. He has said that to me, and, and I got it. The other system that has said that is Lewisville a couple of years ago, as you remember, that that was said. We, we actually, the chairman and I went and talked to Mike Horn, we talked about whether or not it was time to start that transition, and, and what we heard was that Lewisville, they were, the town was not really part and parcel of that. But in order to do this, you really have to do this in lockstep, I believe, with the municipalities, because as I always tell the volunteer fire chiefs, our focus, the focus that I've heard from you is strengthening the volunteer system so it is relevant and as long as it can be that way. And that's what, that's what I've heard loud and clear from you, and I believe that that's, that's kind of, that's, that's what, that's what my marching orders have been. You know, you've got other departments, and Gary Stires, who's in the audience, he sent me an email today and said, you know, just so you know, we do not, we do not, we do not meet that criteria that we want to continue, we, we believe the volunteer system really does still serve Clemmons. You know, Clemmons is one of the wealthiest departments that we have, you know, they, they, they are that, but they are also providing a lot of certi-, they are on the transition from, as a community, from a volunteer system to a paid professional system. They've just got the resources, and because their tax base is so robust, you know, they're doing way more with six cents than, than, than a lot of folks are doing with 15, and so they're, they're just positioned to do that. And that is a function of the way that community has grown and the tax base, that, and the way that tax base has grown. And it's, you know, it's good, it's just one of the wealthiest areas in this county, and so that's, that's what it is. My second recommendation is to begin developing strategies to boost the volunteer system in the remaining departments, including, you know, so, so you sort of, the problem is, is you've got these departments who are sort of having conversations about being a municipal department, and it's hard to be in a room talking about the volunteer system when that's what they want to talk about. And so, you sort of, let's separate the, the folks that really want to make a push to, to municipal service level, and let's talk with everybody else about how we can strengthen this volunteer system. And so, the second recommendation is to begin developing strategies to boost the volunteer system in the remaining departments, including training, recruitment, alternate response to med calls, all the things that are, and, and a lot of other things. And then finally, develop strategies to improve equity and simplification of the system, both in terms of service levels and taxation. It is a big thing, and it, you know, and, and as, as you look at how the data comes out of the revaluation in fall and early spring, it will become evident that, that the system gets pulled farther apart even than it is now, just by virtue of, of how the tax base is moving. The tax bases, home prices across the county have moved up, but obviously where you've got more of them and they moved up more, that, that equity issue is going to be greater and greater. So, those are the, those are, I, I leave a lot with you on, on, on fire.
That's maybe the wrong pun.
Pardon me?
Probably the wrong term to use, you're leaving things on fire with the Fire Chiefs there.
Lot with you, that's right, that's right. I don't think it's on fire. I think it's on, I think the system is, has an amazing group of people who keep it running every single day. They are a huge part of our emergency medical response. You know, I, I hope they know how much I believe and what they do, but I think a big part of my job is having, particularly having looked at that system, having done 18 budgets with them, seeing that, that change over time, is to say. having done eighteen budgets with them, seeing that, that change over time, is to say, the system has changed, and we're going to have to keep looking, we need to look at it deeper about how to make sure that it's serviced the right, the way it needs to.
Dudley, may I ask you a question?
Sure.
I'm delighted to see the chiefs are here today. That's, it's really interesting, and it's also impressive. And I think everything you said, from my perspective anyway, is right on the money. It's a complex problem, and I didn't realize how complex it, how complex it is until I saw some of those figures. What would your idea be, or what would your opinion be? And I don't, you don't respond now if you don't want to. But we need to do something and get it, get it going. And I know the chiefs have their own opinion on what's going on. We are in charge right now. But what would be, and I know this is going to sound political, but I don't mean for it to be political, but what would be the problem with getting you, your replacement coming in, representatives from the chiefs, and representatives from this board to sit down and come up with what could be considered the answer to most of the problems and presented to the Board of Commissioners as a whole as a solution for the future? Is that possible?
Well, I think it happens. I mean, the truth is, we spent a lot of energy talking about the way this system operates. And so I think, I think it's happening, and I think it will continue to happen. So I mean, I think we're, we're in a good place there. I think a very intentional effort about having that conversation with the departments who see it imminent moving to a municipal level is important. And that, 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 you know, the issue, you've got, you've got sixteen departments, fifteen departments, that are very unique. Every one of them has a similar set, has their own set of issues they are dealing with. And so, you know, this board has been very good to them and, and, you know, provided lots of support over the years, and the system's kind of developed over the years. But I do think a very intentional effort to have those conversations around the ones who see the volunteer system not serving their needs and having honest conversations about that, and then having, you know, conversations with, with everybody else about what, what do we need to do to strengthen this and how do we do that? I mean, you know, the truth of the matter is, Walkertown's a real town, and it's, it's, it has experienced incredible growth. It's going to continue to experience that growth, and it's not a defensive incorporation. Louisville is not, Louisville is a growing, vivacious community, and it's not a defensive incorporation anymore. Clemmons is a growing community, and it's not a defensive incorporation anymore. It's, it's a, it's a place that has its own sense and its own set of needs, and there'll be a time when they're going to need their own police department, and they're going to need their own fire department because the structures that we have around public safety aren't really situ, you know, there's, there's tax equity issues, and there's tax equity issues in the law enforcement piece. You know, my prediction is this board, in Chantel's terms, is going to be having a metro police discussion. I think that will happen because it just is what happens as communities grow out. We are, we are going to experience incredible growth in this community, I believe, just from some of the economic development things that we've got going on, the transportation changes that have occurred, and those systems are going to have to be really looked at seriously. And this is one of them, and this is the one I probably have, I, I've been at fire chiefs' meetings for almost all eighteen years I've been here. And so I've, I've seen it, and we've had conversations back when the housing bubble occurred, you know, we, we talked about how, how's the tax base going to recover. You increased tax rates when we had an upside-down revaluation to support the fire departments. You have done absolutely what needed to happen to make sure that they, that they saw the benefit of the growth from their fire tax district. The problem is, is that it's been confined to their fire tax district. And so their destiny is based on what happens in that fire tax district. And so they don't have, you can't have a conversation about a system, the destiny of a system, because you're trying to do it against twenty-some-odd fire tax districts. And that is the reality of it. And that's, that's me, and I could be wrong. They may go back, they're probably back there shaking their head and saying, "He's the guy's an idiot." But they've heard it from me before, so they, you know, they, it's honest. But, but it's just my observation, and I felt like I needed to.
That's, that's why I thought it'd be good if we could get everybody talking with a deadline because we want to get this taken care of by at least the beginning of next year, probably earlier.
I, I don't know that that.
Maybe.
I don't think you will. And I think it'll be, I think it'll be a function of, of, of you, of what you'll see when we, when the revow starts becoming.
Mm-hmm. I want to thank, that's a very, that's a concise presentation, and there've been various discussions around it in different, different ways, but I appreciate sort of having that one package. And I think your three recommendations that you're, that you're filling a plate for, for Chantel are good to get going, and that the firefighters sent out a nice letter I read today, basically said firefighters Forsyth County, for firefighters association, sent out a letter that basically says, y'all need, we need, this is not the right time to do this at this moment, and there needs to be more conversation about impacts. And as I, I think I responded to the original sender, that basically, the unanticipated things that come with any change, they're unanticipated things, and, and they will come later down the road. You can never anticipate all of them, but you can certainly do, if you've got the time, you can do a better job in anticipating those. So I think, I think that's a, a good way to leave it at this point and continue on that journey of trying to, trying to resolve it, and we can feel good about that. But I appreciate you bringing all of that forward in our briefing session. Any other questions, Dudley?
Actually, just a, a couple of comments. I've only been on the board for about a year and a half, not quite, and certainly in that time, I've had more opportunity to learn about the, the robust tradition of volunteer service in firefighting, in the more rural areas of, of our county, and it's, it's an honorable and valuable tradition. But we're also dealing with some conflicting realities as well. There, there's robust growth in the county, but it's uneven. And we can see in the numerical information that Dudley's compiled that you have certain, some areas of the county that are benefiting from the, the robust growth and the revenues that that provides to their, to their district so that they have low tax rates and still a robust level of service. And some of them, like Walkertown and Clemmons and potentially Louisville, are flirting with the, the edge of when they may decide that it's, it's ready to go to a municipal slash, you know, professional department level of service. And I know from my nineteen years on the city council that how fundamentally important and, and how qualitatively different it is when you have a full-time, robust, professional force. The, it's, it's not in the heart of the people that are doing the job. It's not in their dedication. It's in the amount of training, the, the amount of, of, of equipment, the amount of specialization that you can get. I have a professional firefighter in my immediate family now. I dealt with the Professional Firefighters Association and their proud traditions for years on, on the city council. So you've got that, that conflicting reality, and then you've got the, the equity issue of, you know, the, the, the lower growth areas of the county, of the county that are paying higher tax rates for a lower level of service capacity. So, you know, it's, I, I agree, it's not going to be quick and easy to try to reconcile those, those conflicting realities, but we, we do need to make a start on that, and I look forward to working with everybody, including the volunteer departments and the municipalities on, on how to go.
I do have.
Thank you, Sheriff Martin. So I do want to just make one comment and then one kind of request. First, I would just like to thank the county manager for bringing this to our attention in a very passionate way to help us to understand what's ideal for the good of the whole of Forsyth County and how we can leverage our resources for the good of the whole. I think that takes courage sometimes when it may not be the most popular thing to bring to our attention. And of course, you know, that's, that definitely speaks my language. How do we make things right, especially when it comes to government? I do want to also recognize the fire chiefs for coming in as a unified front. It, that takes courage to come in and let us know that you all are at least fundamentally on one accord to help us to understand better how to support the volunteer system, which frankly humbles me that people would volunteer their time to make sure that our citizens are safe. So I want you to know that I, I definitely appreciate that as a citizen. Lastly, before I get to my request, I just hope that we're not waiting and hesitating because it's hard to do the right thing. If we're waiting because this is about proper planning, then I can get with that. But if this is just about kicking it down the road, kicking the can down the road until we can get people to lose interest around doing the right thing, it's, that's going to be unfortunate, to say the least. I would lastly ask, as a request for, at some point, the fire chiefs from, for instance, Clemmons, where the revenue comes at one point nine, to have conversation with us on this impact versus somewhere like Salem Chapel where it's one forty-four, so that I can understand the implication around bringing equity, if that makes sense. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I just make, I could talk a while, but as the doctor tells me, there's no need of talking about things, and the water's gone over the dam, and there's been a whole lot gone over the dam, and, but it's good about, it's, I understand that about everything. It's, it's good to know about the good old days, about a lot of things, days gone by, days gone by. You can look at a lot of different things and what's going on now. Not going, not much of anything is going back to days gone by. Be the days that's coming. But we'll, I would just follow up on Commissioner Plauer's suggestion. We'll be getting calls from the fire organizations to kind of see what is going on, and I would agree that we can get some kind of group together, two or three people on this board, whatever it might decide to do, and then the fire people and, and have some discussion. If time goes on, we can, we can work it out. And I just, as far as discussion, I just say that. So you'll know that that can happen, and I think will, so that's about, that's about it for now. And I would, I would suggest the possibility when we do, if, however the meetings might work out, I don't know whether to do it in groups, like half of the fire people representatives, and then another half, or try to do it, have everybody to meet all at one time. That's not an easy thing to do with, with anything you're talking about. But nevertheless, we'll, Ms. Chairman, see what board talk and figure out what we can do as far as some conversation as time goes on.
Yeah, thank you. And I certainly agree that ties into Dudley's recommendation that we get, get started earlier in the fiscal year, next year, since it is the reevaluation year. And I, I don't think every decision has to be made, but some of them probably do need to be made. I appreciate it, Commissioner. Bessie's saying that in a year and a half, he's getting the flavor. I've been doing this ten years, and I'm not so sure. I, I am better. I know a whole, I know a whole lot more than I did know, and the more I know, sometimes the more confusing it gets, just a little bit. Today, I wrote down a couple of notes about, like to know a little bit more about why fire districts are so hard to align with fire department districts and why that's a, why that's such an, just one of the questions I wrote down. But anyway, those kind of things, but we will work on it. Really appreciate all of you being here today. Thank you. So, Denise Price, number two.
I do have a presentation. So I'm here to share some information today about our recommendations for fiscal year twenty-five behavioral health maintenance and opioid settlement funding. And we may be able to go past the first page. So we'll start with behavioral health maintenance of effort funding, and you may hear me refer to that as MOE. We have annually a little over four million dollars to fund both internal and external programs and projects. We also currently have a fund balance of approximately nine hundred and seventy-seven thousand dollars. So this year, we opened up applications for the period run in February the seventh to March the first, and then we had a review committee to establish recommendations by review of that information during the month of March. Our Health and Human Services Board reviewed recommendations and unanimously approved them on April the third. Just a quick summary, and then we'll dig into the details of it, but for MOE funding, we're recommending continuation plus one pilot program that would be in the range of two point five million dollars. Also, new projects that'll be a little over two million for a total funding request of four million, four hundred and ninety-two thousand, nine hundred and fifteen dollars. You'll notice that that amount is more than what our annual allocation is, so we are requesting permission to use fund balance in the amount of four hundred and sixty-six thousand, two hundred and thirty-eight dollars. So the first item that we just talked about was continuation and pilots. So you'll see here the items that we are recommending for that. The only item that is listed, well, two items for the pilots is the women's unit at the detention center, the expanded mental health services, and also some of the pharmacy inventory overrun dollars. You'll notice that the men's unit is not here this year. That's because we are entering to our fourth year, which is the tipping point for where we typically do not consider that a pilot anymore, but you will see that on our next section of agencies. Any questions here before I move along? So our recommended projects would have listed here for you is all, not on this page, but on several pages, all of the applications that we received and the programs. You'll see the amount requested and the amount recommended, and in your packets is additional information regarding these agencies, the decisions made, and also the funding that they've received from other sources over the course of the year. Again, any questions about anything on this page?
What does CST stand for? What does CST stand for? The fair first one, Monarch CST.
Community Support Team. And then we have additional agencies as well listed that had applied for fiscal year 25 M O E funding. And you'll see that the total of those two pages is that number that's a bit over $2 million that is recommended. Any questions about anything on this page?
Denise, we don't have that copy in here nor that, the one prior to that. I mean, you've got the descriptions of it, but we don't have it in that form.
I'll get it in that form for you, absolutely. Apologies for that oversight.
May I ask, do you have identified sources for the recommended FY25?
So this will be M O E dollars?
Yes.
It's the $2 million of new dollars that are left over out of that 4.4 something million.
Correct.
And we have to spend that every year. I mean, we have committed to programs and we cannot reduce those in order to remain federal funding. I think, I say it in a better way, in order to continue receiving federal money, we cannot back off of what we have been doing, and that becomes maintenance of effort. We've made that effort in the past, we have to maintain it. So we get into that process. So we really are looking at new, that some of the, you'll notice, some of these are requests from, they're not all new, there's just an opportunity to request again to continue. You'll notice that some actually were funded last year, and they're being recommended to be less or more with a note to explain. And I haven't had time to read all the notes we just got today. And I think reading the notes, it'll start making a lot more sense. And then next year, the exact same thing, I'll repeat.
Still is one of the new guys. So this $2 million is already built into the established budget. It's not new dollars.
Correct.
And it's not coming from sort of the funds that shift around during year-to-year special appropriations.
Correct. In fact, when it says fund balance, it is a fund balance in the M O E fund.
Thank you.
It's not fund balance of the county. It is a fund balance within the M O E fund.
Thank you.
Say that correctly?
Well said. So just to recap, the continuation of the one pilot is $2.4 million. The recommended projects in addition to that is $2 million. So that puts us at a total funding request of $4.4 million, and that would require the use of $466,000 of our fund balance, that M O E fund balance. Before we talk about specific opioid settlement recommendations, I thought it may be good just to do a real quick overview of what settlement dollars are. It's resulting from local and state governments across the nation entering into opioid settlements with opioid manufacturers, distributors, and pharmacies. The funds allow our local governments to address opioid use prevention and treatment and require significant industry changes in the distribution and sale of opioids. North Carolina is going to receive a bit more than $1.5 billion over an 18-year period that ends in 2038. Forsyth County will receive $35 million, and the city of Winston-Salem close to $6 million during the life cycle. Couple of notes about this. You might say $35 million. Denise, you've told me $37 million before, and that is true. The reason that that number looks different is that the state has changed how the dollars are distributed to us, so it's more front-loaded in the beginning. So there's not the interest accumulation in that total number that comes to us. We are not obligated to spend our dollars as they are received. We can roll them over as much as we need or want to. So when we are holding dollars, they are earning interest, but we also have the opportunity to spend them a bit quicker. There is a memorandum of agreement between the state of North Carolina and local governments that direct how we use these dollars. There are limitations to it. They must be evidence-based treatment. They must meet the criteria of the actual strategy as it is outlined in that M O A, and it's not to be used for general government spending or law enforcement. We have elected to utilize option B strategies that are outlined in the M O A, and it really gives us the opportunity to maximize the number of strategies available to us. Over this 18-year cycle, if we do it well, and quite frankly, if we don't, we're going to need to be able to pivot and do things differently. So that gives us as much fluidity as we could possibly have. The amount of dollars that we have available for FY25 funding is $4.6 million. Similar timeline as the M O E request. The application period was February 7th to March the 1st. The review committee reviewed during the month of March, and the Health and Human Services Board reviewed and unanimously approved on April the 3rd. Thought it might be good to review just very quickly the shared vision for positive community change that was developed by our opioid stakeholder committee. This really is our guiding star in terms of what we are recommending. The Forsyth County Opioid Settlement Committee envisions communities where the needs of every person are met holistically and timely, free of stigma and judgment, and rich with hope and acceptance. Communities where the supports to achieve goals and dreams, whatever those goals and dreams are, are accessible to own. A place where we are knowledgeable and equipped to make informed decisions, and where individuals, children, and families receive long-term healing supports. A community skilled and equipped with resources to recognize trauma and to navigate away from trauma and toward healing. So now the actual recommendations. Again, these tables are set up very similarly, and I'll get them matching to what is in your packet. There's a 25 amount, fiscal year 25 requested amount and the recommended amount. I'll posit each of these to see if you have any questions. M O U D is medication used to treat opioid use disorders. I guess skip past one. There you go. So you'll see on this last slide that the total amount recommended is $3,323,965. Be happy to answer any questions.
So the city's money comes through us?
It does not.
What was that I just saw? I saw something, Winston.
On one of the sheets, it had the $5 million as just what they will get, but apparently it didn't run through us.
That is correct.
Thirty-five is us, and the five, seven, or whatever it is, goes to the city.
Correct.
And the reason it's less than what we thought is because we're getting more money earlier, we're getting less interest that the state's holding. So obviously, we could get it if we held it longer or whatever, but that's kind of a minor, that's a minor point.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I may just add, so no one's surprised, we're anticipating that next month, there'll be a smaller settlement that'll be coming before you to approve from Kroger. It will only be about $40 million for the state. Ultimately, the county should receive over the course of a number of years about $1 million.
It's good. I do have one question, because we didn't have your slide. Maybe we do. I just didn't, it's in another stack, the slides. I was looking at your handout. So you actually did not budget all of the opioid settlement dollars from the requests that were received.
That is correct.
So there was, and I'd be remiss if I did not say, this is a lot of projects.
It's a lot of projects.
And to review all these projects and write all these, and to evaluate them and do that, huge, huge amount of work and hours. I mean, we're looking at this one little thing, you go over the totals, but it's a long, it's a lot of work to do that. And obviously, you are discerning in that all dollars are not allocated, meaning that if a project didn't meet a standard that needed to be or didn't have good outcomes that you could measure, the biggest problem a lot of times is measuring outcomes. There are a lot of good processes that would think this would make a difference, but the outcomes, it's hard to attribute to that thing, to those treatments. So obviously, there were some dollars left on the table that will roll over, roll over into the next allocation. And if I remember correctly, this year, those were done on, you did six-month kind of reviews? Did you do two cycles this year?
We did, we did two cycles this year.
You anticipate that in the future?
I do not, unless I'm directed to do so. It was very difficult for the agencies that received funding in January to be able to ramp up, implement, and have some outcomes so that we could use that to evaluate. So you'll notice that many of those that were in that first six-month, that last six-month cycle, have been recommended for additional funding next year, so we can continue to evaluate. The one-year cycle really allows us to focus very heavily, especially with this number of providers that have been recommended, to focus with them, to build the collaborations, and to make that as strong as possible before we move on. Obviously, can be adjusted if community needs is different.
But thank you for all the time that you all spent on this stuff. I look forward, I got, there's a lot to read. I'd need to read this.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Dive into.
We're ready to go over the.
We have two items that we'll take a quick, we'll hear from quickly, just because they involve public hearings. The first one's a public hearing to consider the expenditure of county general funds for an economic development project. I think Hossani Mitchell is going to come up and brief that, at least initially, but you will see a public hearing advertised for this. Hossani, it's all yours.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Manager. This item is for an economic development incentive package for a company looking to locate here in Forsyth County. This company manufactures large construction, manufacturing equipment, and it's considering locating its facility near existing sites, either here in the U.S. or also in Mexico. This company expects to have a capital investment of $70 million, and that $70 million is broken into $47 million for real property and $23 million in machinery and equipment. The $70 million investment would create 151 full-time jobs in our county, and those jobs have an average salary of $64,362 per year. And those 151 jobs would be created between 2026 and 2029. The county's proposal is a five-year incentive package, and that five-year incentive would not exceed $944,006, and that's 50% of their tax liability within that five-year period. The company is considering a Brownsville exemption, which would potentially reduce its tax liability. But again, the county incentive would remain at 50%, and would not exceed $944,006. As far as workforce, they do look to participate with all of our local workforce development partners. We will have a full detailed presentation at the public hearing, but I'm happy to answer any questions that you have today.
Any questions for Hossani?
All right, thanks.
Thanks, Hossani. The second item, the public hearing actually has been closed, I believe. So Chris, if you can come up and just do a quick reminder of what that issue is.
Thank you. Yes, this public hearing has been closed. This was considered at your March 21st. I'm actually not going to do the PowerPoint, I don't think. I think I'm just going to add a little bit. This is dealing with UDO CC25, which was a text amendment for some changes to our multifamily district to try to right-size it. There were provisions dealing with the number of attached units for townhomes in RM5, going from four to six. There were some changes to the allowed height. And then there was a change, I believe Commissioner Bessie had an issue or had a question concerning the buffer yard applicability, under the use condition for residential building multifamily for the county. Similar to what we did in the city, we had a proposal to change that when the buffer yard would be triggered. Currently, the ordinance reads if you have more than four units. We wanted to change that consistent with what the city did to if you have a multifamily project of greater than one acre. And that was the issue whenever this was heard on the 21st, and it was continued to May 2nd. We did some research. There are, I want to say 30, around 30, 37 parcels of currently of general use RM property within the county, and that totals 12 acres cumulatively with those 34 parcels. The majority of those parcels are actually located within a subdivision, for some reason that's owned RM12, but of single-family homes. Looking beyond that, there are, I believe, 23 or 24 parcels of between one and five acres that could potentially be subdivided to less than one-acre lots. But I believe that cumulatively, those 24 lots was around 60 acres. So all told, for all of Forsyth County zoning jurisdiction, you're looking at 74 acres of property that this would apply to. You know, looking at it, generally speaking, we try to keep our ordinances, we'd like to keep our ordinances between the city and the county consistent. However, this buffer yard provision is already in a county-only provision. There are some differences between the use conditions for residential building multifamily in the city and county, so under those use conditions, it's already separate. Our recommendation would be to adopt it as is, as we've proposed, but you could, we could easily take that section out for the county if that's what the county desires. And we have, you'll probably get a memo sometime later this week or early next week. I've written a memo and actually provided you with an alternative ordinance that actually removes that buffer yard section as amended and keeps it as is, so it would still be anything greater than four acres. And so that gives you some options. And with that, I'll be glad, I'm sorry, anything less, anything more than four units? Yeah, sorry, misspoke. So with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Questions for Chris?
Just wanted to thank you for doing the research, and thank you for preparing the alternative. I may have a suggestion on the second.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. I will do a quick review of things that we are still finalizing that will be reviewed in detail next Thursday. We have two special resolutions, one for Mental Health Awareness Month and one for Historic Preservation Month. Obviously, the minutes will be forthcoming for the meeting you just held. We do have items six and seven are the agenda items that deal with formal approval of what you just heard from Denise, and so that will be there. Item eight is an amendment to, it really resolves kind of in advance of budget, the 23 PGO, which we are late doing just because of the issues around FC Connect that we have been struggling with and dealing with. So, and there's also an element of that, as we present them, will be sort of, again, in preparation for this budget, that we know there's pressure on this budget that we're getting ready to recommend to you. And so as we work with departments, we really have tried to pull out even smaller-scale capital out of some of those to put them over here in this PGO fund. And then part of that discussion can also be ideas you have for FY25 PGO that we can, if we want to start compiling that list as we head into budget. So we have that. Item nine is, it's really a cleanup item. Some of the difficulties around the capital projects, particularly with FC Connect, has made it difficult to identify the fund balances from the fire tax district for a truck that is used exclusively by the overlay district. And so we're trying to get that in the right, in the right account. So it's really more of a maintenance item. And then the same thing with item 10, the school's capital project ordinance, you'll hear that. It's going to be a big day for the airport. They've got a grant agreement for Taxi Way Alpha, and then they've also got the design work for that as well, just to do that rehabilitation there. All right. And then a couple of other just regular contract items, Laser Fish, that's the system we rely on for that document management system in DSS. There's a ballot printing service. Obviously, we're getting ready to head into the election season, but this is actually ballot printing for the May 14th special second primary. You've got Poll Book Services, another fairly expensive item that we need to bring in front of you. We've got a blanket contract, I believe, for automotive repair services that Fleet has been working on. We are pleased to be able to say we are getting, kicking off another project. So the Highland Avenue Park Project is going to be shown to you, and we have a GMP. We're ready to move on that one. And so we've got that. We are going to have to move a little bit of money from our inflationary contingency to do that, but it's not, it's not driving a big, big increase. That's pretty good. Daymark Recovery Service, an amendment to agreement with them. You've got an agreement with Granger on air purifing respirators for public health. And a property matter, we are bringing to you the, sort of the necessity around the old colladium, the old buildings there at Haynes Mill Road. We've done a lot of work on those, and our recommendation really is that those buildings have outlived their life, don't convert to another use very easily, and just from a safety, security standpoint, and from a marketing perspective, being able to get, you know, it's in an industrial area, let's go ahead and just demolish those buildings. And so you'll see that in this tax refund. So it's exciting Thursday.
Before you get past your property matters, that.
Before we get past property matters, that, I don't know exactly how to describe it. I can't, I don't believe, yeah, I've probably been in it. That bill, that thing, it's a dome, where they, the clear definition of it, I'm not sure. You can go in there, it's got all kinds of lights in it, and 30 years ago, 25, the 30th thing probably cost, seemed like it was five or six million dollars. It was outrageous at the time. I thought, what are you going to do with that?
That we would bring that building down. It leaks like a sieve. Are you talking about that big thing where it has the pendulum in it, with the glass?
You need to figure out something about that. It's like, that's sort of like an old farm, a dairy farm. It had silos on it. And if I'm not mistaken, the silos that was, it's out there at Brookbury, they may still be there. I'm not sure there. It's not a place that I visit often. I used to...
Yeah, that silo, they turned that into...
Okay, well, you think about something for this. That's...
I don't see Kirby. See Kirby. You got that, Kirby?
Come up with some idea.
Yes, sir.
We might demolish everything around it, but it is the leakiest building on the planet. And I don't see putting money in the roof, but...
If you're fortunate enough to stay around here a while, you'll see what's built, torn down.
Yeah. That's what the Romans say.
It's true. I think it's fact.
That's it, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Whoa, we had, we did want to make a mention that, I wanted to mention that Duke Energy presented a check for that grant for $25,000 yesterday. And so Vice Chairman Wiz and I were up there, and so you'll see some public notification about that. And Duke Energy's excited about that park. We had to break into it on the back road, but we got into the park and we got a picture taken. But we are, we do have an opening.
Didn't break into it.
That's right, yeah. The move a farm fence, which I'm pretty good at. So anyway, there's that.
And I wanted to mention that Sunday, I just happened to be flipping through channels, and I saw Forsyth Connects, and it is excellent. And I hope more and more folks can watch it. It's once a week. Is that correct?
It's, we do, we do a monthly thing, but they may...
Probably air probably four times.
They air it fairly frequently, but yes.
And Dudley is the executive producer.
Yes, I am.
But it was excellent. It's great information for our residents, and I was very pleased. I just happened to run across it, and I hope more people will run across it.
That's on, that's on our website, too, is it not?
Yeah, you can actually...
It's streamed, so folks can pick it up on our Vimeo site. A lot of times, Ed and his team highlight segments on our Facebook page, on our web, and all that kind of stuff. But you can get all that. And some of it's kind of evergreen that you, if you just want to learn about county services. And we've done enough of those episodes now that there is something about everything.
That's right.
It's great.
Yeah. For the business, we'll stand adjourned.